Meeting of the McAllister City Council Tuesday, June 23. We do have a quorum. We have Dr. Frank Dennehy here from Libby Ward Church to lead us in an invocation and pledge. Would you come up and just step to that microphone?
I just want to thank you for the honor to be able to do this. Would you all join me in prayer? Father, we just come tonight asking for your wisdom on each and every one of these council members, that they will make decisions that will benefit and grow this community and help to make it grow stronger. Lord, we know that there is many things going on that's the COVID-19. Lord, you have, it has caused many problems. And, Lord, we ask that, we just continue to pray that this virus, this disease, is just taken care of and removed from society. But beyond that, Lord, that they are realizing that there is more people suffering from depression, suicide, as results of what has been happening through the quarantine. So, Lord, we need wisdom to understand these problems and to be able to take care of them in a way that will not only glorify you but bring peace into the community. We also, Lord, are praying for unity within not only this city but our country. And for the riots that are going on, the cause is justified, but some of the riots are certainly not. And we know, Lord, that when it's just anger and rage that come out of people, nothing positive can ever happen. And so, we ask that unity be a key part of not only this meeting but to allow us to come together as an example of what can be done, even with different opinions, that can come together and bring unity into a city, which in turn will help the state and in turn the nation. And so, we thank you, Lord, for this privilege and ask that you will bless this meeting and strengthen us. In Jesus' name, amen. Would you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
We are on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. I didn't have anybody sign up. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing no one, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And we have a fairly lengthy one today, so bear with me. Excuse me. A, approval of minutes from June 9, 2020, regular meeting of the McAllister City Council. B, approval of claims for June 3, 2020, through June 16, 2020. C, consider an act upon. Approval and authorization for the mayor to sign a contract for services with the McAllister Defense Support Association and McAllister Defense Support Services Incorporated for the support of a full-time office and executive director position for MDSS. This contract includes shared funding with the MDSA for fiscal year 2020, 2021. D, consider an act upon to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding between the city of McAllister and Eastern Oklahoma State College to continue employing a small business advisor through the Oklahoma Business Development Center. E, consider an act upon to authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with a spectrum group to provide technical and logistical assistance to establish the goals, objectives, and timing of the 2020 annual stampede event and to provide legislative, Department of Defense monitoring, and advocacy services. F, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Feed the Need Foundation for Rural Oklahoma, KETO, for funding of the city of McAllister Title III nutrition centers. G, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Oklahomans for Independent Living and the city of McAllister for funding in the amount of $18,000. H, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Pride and McAllister and the city of McAllister for funding in the amount of $48,000. I, consider an act upon approval and authorization for the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with David T. Hargrave, LLC, as a pre-treatment management consultant within the city of McAllister pre-treatment program. J, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Pittsburgh County Emergency Management and the city of McAllister for funding in the amount of $40,000 for fiscal year 2020, 2021. K, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Corrections for Use of State Property to conduct the annual July 4 fireworks display. L, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Hans Pyrotechnics for the July 4, 2020 fireworks display to be held at the McAllister Expo Center on Saturday, July 4, 2020. M, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between the city of McAllister and McAllister Main Street for funding for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year in the amount of $24,000 as per the approved 2021 budget. N, concur with mayor's appointment of Louis Smitherman to the McAllister Housing Authority to replace Ms. Mary Ellen Keeter for a term to expire July 2024. O, consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to approve an excess workers' compensation insurance quotation with Safety National Casualty Corporation. Would anybody like anything removed? Councilwoman Harrison?
This is Councilwoman Harrison. Can you hear me clearly? I'll take my mask off. Cat talk. All right. B as in boy, C as in cat, D as in dog, and H as in... Harrison?
Would anyone else like anything removed?
Mayor, this is Councilman Pritchard. I would like I removed.
Say I?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stasiak?
Oh.
Oh?
We have an update on the policy.
All right. And last call, any other removals? In that case, I would take a motion to approve items A, E, F, G, J, K, L, M, and N. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second any discussion. Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Because we have so many pulled out, we will discuss one, vote on it, move to the next one, discuss it, and vote on it. So, B, Councilwoman Harrison?
Okay, thank you so much. I'll try, like you said, it is lengthy, so I'll try to speed through here real quickly. And I would like to thank Mr. Stasiak and his staff, or they already answered some questions, but for the taxpayers, citizens, I just wanted to just mention the questions that I asked. It was pursuant to the claims, June 3 through June 16. It was Page 1. It was about the CLEET, $1,674.15. And it was explained that these were fees that were collected on all police fines. And CLEET is a statewide training agency for public safety. Page 2, it was Dr. Makilia?
Makalia.
Makalia, all right. My apologies. All right. It was for services rendered. It's our understanding, he's the, or I shouldn't say understanding, but he is the medical advisor for the city ambulance service, and they have to have a physician on staff in case there's an emergency. Page 3, McAllister Scottish Right, $1,455. And that is to be paid for the use of the parking lot on Adams Street, which is adjacent to the library. Page 5, do you pronounce it wave 2 or...
Wave 11.
Wave 11, oh, okay. I wasn't sure what that was. All right, thank you, my apology there. All right, $2,208 and even. It is maintenance leasing for storage in the cloud quote for the city accounts. Page 12, the, do you pronounce it Correll or Carol or, how do you pronounce that?
Carol.
Carol, all right, thank you. The Carol Corp, groundwater monitoring fee, $6,362. It's an organization that monitors the water and gas wells at the McAllister landfill. Page 13, tourism, $10,309.51. That is for advertising to encourage people to come to the city of McAllister and our Page 16, Eastern State College, and that is going to be on the agenda. If, please correct me, anyone, it's for five months, it's not just for, is this a five-month funding for that contract?
Councilwoman, they're behind on their billing.
Okay.
And they're catching up. This is a five-month period.
Okay.
It hasn't been paid for in the current contract.
Oh, okay, that's what I was looking at, five months. Page 26, employee travel and training, $349.51. It will be covered through a budget amendment at the end of the year to bring it back to balance. Page 27, lab fees, $4,428. This lab fee is for testing for the water and wastewater, and it's also going to be covered during a budget amendment at the end of the year to bring it back to balance. Page 28, the 4th of July, it was a donation for $20,000, so it's not a city expense, correct? Okay. And there were a couple of sheets of paper pertaining to some water bill corrections, but it looks like that's been resolved. And that's B.
Any other discussion on item B? Take a motion in a second to approve item B. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second any discussion. Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Item C, that was yours as well, was it, Councilwoman Harrison?
All right, thank you. Item C, and I think I've got a quick question. This isn't personal, because I don't even know this individual, but I did want to know about the duties. This is, this is going to be $46,589. I just want to know, and it looks like it's a decrease in the funding, this person is asking for less, or this organization. My question, on behalf of the citizens of McAllister, do we have enough funding to pay for the furloughed city employees plus this position also, or will it be one or the other? Or all?
Councilwoman, we do not have the funding in place for the furloughed employees. That'll happen when the revenue of the city comes back. This is a position, this person is an advocate for the city of McAllister.
Okay.
She is the one that works closely with our ammunition plant.
Mm-hmm.
And also with our delegation in Washington, DC. They not only do the McAllister Stampede, they are also the voice for the ammunition plant in our community. They're the ones that have worked on legislation to increase employment levels by 600 new jobs out at that plant.
Okay.
This individual is a very valuable asset to this community, and this organization has been in place now for about nine years.
Mm-hmm.
And is an extremely valuable asset for our community and the future of our community, not only in job creation but also in working with our delegation in Washington.
May I ask this question? City Councilwoman Harrison, so when it comes to the travel, who's, I see it's divided, that the city pays part of the travel, $2,900, is that per year on page?
That is an annual budget that you're looking at.
Uh-huh, okay.
And so that you understand, this individual is funded by two separate organizations.
I see that.
The MDSS side of the organization is mainly funded by donations and contributions from businesses here in the city of McAllister.
I see that on Page 1. All right, I was just asking on behalf of the citizens, thank you so much.
It's a good question.
Do you have anything else on, any other comments on C? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Item D?
D, all right, thank you. On item D, all right, this is for two small business experts that are at the Eastern Oklahoma State College, and it's for $37,500. And they're also funded by another group of, or another organization beside the city of McAllister, correct?
Yes, half is funded by the Small Business Development Association down in the Durant area, and the other half is funded by the city of McAllister. They are the representation and the voice of all small businesses in our community. They're the ones that help the new businesses. If you were to start a new business and needed help with a business plan, needed accounting services, needed just anything you needed to start a business, these are the people you'd want to go visit with. It is, they've come here to the city on a quarterly basis and reported, not only the new businesses they work with, but the jobs created, the investment that's been created by all these jobs, and they are the voice of that small business in our community.
I know they've been here with presentations. Can you tell us how many jobs they've helped create in the last year or the last? I know with the virus, there's been a hold on things, but do you have an idea?
Actually, Dana Hugel and Henry are both here from the Small Business Development Center, and I think they'd be more than happy to answer your questions.
Well, I would like for them to do that. And this is not for me, this is for the taxpayers, because today is my last day.
Should I pass?
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
So, this report is for this calendar year, but I did, Councilwoman, also pulled the information that you've asked for, for the funding year of July 2019 to current. And so, we've worked with 38 clients specifically in the McAllister area, the 74501 zip code in that calendar year, with four business starts, 14 new jobs, and capital investment of over 1.4 million.
Could you, what was it, 14?
It was 14 new jobs.
14 new jobs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Four businesses and 38 clients?
Yes.
Okay.
And new capital of 1.4 million.
Okay.
So, this report, though, is broken down, so you have an idea of what we do in the region, because obviously, you know, there are more dollars that come in from the outside area. But on Page 2, you can see, the second slide has the cumulative for the county. We've worked with 46 clients in the county. But then I've broken it down by zip code, so you know exactly that we've worked with 33 clients from the 74501 zip code in this calendar year.
Okay.
So, so far for 2020, we have three new business starts, 11 new jobs created. And a lot of this, I'll be honest with you, we've done a lot of work during COVID, and we can't count numbers for any of the disaster relief funding until those clients report that funding back to us. So, we can't just, even though we know businesses that have applied for funding, because we've helped them through that process. We can't report any of that back until they come to us and say, yes, we've accepted that loan, and thank you for your help. They have to do both of those things for us to be able to, it's what we call, yeah, the SBA considers that attribution for our work.
You guys work very closely with Main Street and the Chamber to...
Yes, yes.
To be a point of knowledge and technical assistance for all of the businesses that were applying for, say, the SBA.
Yes, yes. And we, both of those organizations, as well as KTC, so we've helped create as a group kind of a landing page to allow businesses to have a place to go and get the most up-to-date information. We've provided, you can see, and I don't want to jump around too much, but if you move to Page 4, we have hosted eight disaster-specific training events. Those are online, but they were basically targeted to this area. And over 18 events in 2020, serving over 400 clients across the state. But I knew that you all would have the question of how many of our McAllister folks have taken advantage of that. So, we've had 64 clients attend those events, but it's also been interesting, to your point, Mayor, we've had a lot of banks and other organizations come to our trainings so that they can turn around and help small businesses as well. So, that, I think, has been an asset in this time when things are, information is changing so quickly about the disaster relief programs.
And a lot of that stuff is time-critical, because when you've got your money, when you got your request in, determine if you've got money or not.
Exactly.
And we've also been helping with the new Oklahoma relief program that Governor State decided Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So, we are currently focusing on that.
Great.
Oh, is that...
Yeah, I just got one more thing. If you guys have any information on the new program?
Mm-hmm.
Could you send it to me so I can share it on Facebook?
Absolutely. We've already been reaching out to clients about that program, so we'll be happy to send that over.
Because it's also, from what I understand, the, it's tailored first towards minority-owned businesses, isn't it?
Yes.
I believe it's 18% is dedicated for minority-owned small businesses.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Harrison, I'm sorry to jump in on that.
No problem at all, thank you. How many businesses did you say thus far for 2020? Did you say three?
Yes, new businesses.
Okay, and then they have to report back to you?
Yes, we do small business startup workshops every month. And goodness, for the last two months, those have been full. We try to cap those at 50, and I've done two a month instead of one a month, because there's, the demand has been so high, because I think a lot of people are interested in starting businesses when you have an economic downturn. They might have had a side hustle that then turns into their full-time business. And so, there, a lot of them are looking at expanding and aren't ready to open their doors yet, but will be before the end of the year.
Now, were those classes virtual, or were they, they weren't?
They are right now.
Were they free?
Yes.
Yes, all of our classes are free, and we're offering them alongside KTC. So, KTC helps us push out all the information, and we can have access to KTC's resources and some of their experts, too. So, we have a lot of different ways we can get all the information out.
Before COVID, obviously, those were in-person classes, and they were offered monthly, and KTC allows us to offer those at their facility, and then we offer some of them at Eastern Oklahoma State College here in McAllister.
Mayor, may I ask one more question? I think this is the last one, hopefully. Do you have any incubator businesses or anybody doing anything like that, where they start their business inside of another business or along with, or partnership or something like that?
We have, there's a few, but it's not really a traditional incubator. McAllister doesn't have an incubator. But there are some that say someone is working as an accountant, or they're welding on the side, something like that, that they use some of their current jobs or resources to help get a jumpstart on their own business when they need to decide.
With that other business's knowledge.
Almost like an apprentice?
Yes.
Right, with their knowledge and with their blessing, so that they can jumpstart them.
So, they can jumpstart. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate the handout.
Any other questions or comments on item D? Take a motion in a second to approve item D. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number H. Is that, was that you, Councilwoman Harrison?
Yes, sir, it was. All right. Councilwoman Harrison, I think I've got a couple of quick questions. This is pursuant to Pride and McAllister, it's now called Keep McAllister Beautiful, right? KMB. The $48,000, we have funds for that. I know this organization does great things, so this is nothing personal, I'm just making an inquiry to see how we are with our budget. That's my question.
Councilwoman Harrison, everything that you are seeing, every one of these contracts have been discussed when we were working on the budget.
Okay.
Those amounts are in the budget. We have an approved budget, and that funding is available to each one of these agencies.
Okay, I just wanted to ensure that we were, and thank you so much, and that's it.
Any other comments or questions on item H? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion?
Oh, may I inject, all right. I do want to say that, it's my understanding that the Pride and McAllister, aka Keep McAllister Beautiful, they are going to have an event in Michael J. Hunter Park this Saturday, the 27th, at 9 o'clock, to clean up that park.
Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item I, I believe that was yours, Councilman Pritchard?
Yes, it is. I just, I wanted to pull this. My business works pretty closely, or David Hargrave works pretty closely with our business on the pre-treatment, so just to make sure there's no conflict here, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Are there, is there any other discussion on item I? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Abstain.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. On to agenda item O, Mr. Stasiak.
Mayor, members of the council, we have an updated fee schedule for our excess workers' comp. It is a reduction in the premium and also a reduction in the commission. It has been adjusted for this. So, for those of you that are watching online, the deposit premium prior to this was $53,786. That's been reduced to $51,095. And also, the commission has been adjusted from 15% down to 10%. So, I just wanted to give you that information. So, the request tonight for excess workers' comp is a payment of $51,095.
Senator?
You got anything?
Any questions or comments on item O? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to agenda item number one, consider an act upon authorizing the city manager to sign the letter of intent to meet conditions and request for obligation of funds and carry out the terms outlined in the letter of conditions for the Community Facilities Grant from the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, for a grant in the... Yes, and the motion carries. We are now on to agenda item number one. Consider an act upon authorizing the city manager to sign the letter of intent to meet conditions and requests for obligation of funds and carry out the terms outlined in the letter of conditions for the community facilities grant from the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, Rural Development, for a grant in the amount of ninety-seven hundred dollars towards replacement of the roof at J.I. Stipe Center. Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, members of the council, we've been in, in need of replacing the roof at the Stipe Center for many, many years. We've had a lot of leaks. We've had a lot of repairs. Just a lot of work that's been done on that roof, knowing that it needed to be replaced in the future. Our grant writer, Stephanie Giacomo, has, came across a USDA grant and was able to obtain the maximum amount in that grant, and we were successful in receiving that. The grant is in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred dollars. The total project for this replacement of the, of the Stipe roof is sixty-five thousand dollars is the estimate that we currently have. The city does have and has funded, and is ready to fund, the, the remainder, which is fifty-five thousand three hundred dollars, which is in our infrastructure account. Staff recommends accepting the grant in the amount of ninety-seven hundred dollars.
Are there any questions or comments? I will take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign the collective bargaining agreement and the memorandum of understanding for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for the McAllister Fire Department. Mr. Stasiak again?
Mayor, members of the council, this was discussed in, looked at, in total, at the last council meeting. This is the formal presentation of the CBA for the firefighters for 2020, 2021. I am pleased to inform you that the firefighters have accepted the concessions that the city put forth and is ready to move on with their contract for the upcoming year.
Any, any questions or comments? Councilwoman Harrison?
Oh, Councilwoman Harrison, may I direct you to the city manager? It, it looks like on the memorandum, memorandum of understanding that they, their wages and the time that they're going to take off is going to be equivalent to what the, the city employees are doing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And I had another question. It was a legal term, and I wasn't sure if the, if you could answer it, or the city attorney, uh, was, all right, on page thirteen of the contract, the last sentence, I, I just didn't understand, it's legal terminology. All right, page thirteen at the bottom, the last sentence, is it okay to read it, or, all right? It says, "This date will remain with the employee for the future merit evaluations, regardless of future promotions until the," page fourteen, "until the employee tops out and reverts to the date of hire for anniversary date." And then in parentheses, it says, "This definition will change language in a number of locations in the agreement, and if the parties miss a particular location, this definition is controlling." So, could someone tell us what that means, please?
It just means that if there's other areas of the contract that we're talking about, anniversary dates or those type of things, and we come off, we come across something in these eighty-six pages that we missed.
Okay.
This is the controlling information for any disputes that might be in the contract.
Oh, okay. Now, may I ask this other question? Say, for instance, with this virus going on, this is not going to take away from anybody's accumulation of, of, of time going toward their anniversary, or going toward their employment or retirement, right?
No, ma'am.
Because it was like two or three months. That won't be counted off. That'd still be counted toward it?
No, they're still here employed with the city.
No, no, I'm just saying in general, this, yeah, they're still employees. They're still employees, and they've been off, some of them have not been off, or have, they've still been working?
These are our firefighters. This is our emergency response. None of these people have been off.
None of these, okay, that's what I, that's what I was going to get to. All right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's, uh-huh. Thank you so much.
Any, any other questions or comments on item number two? Take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We are on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign a, sign the contractor's final pay number five and certificate of substantial completion for the contract with Built Right Construction LLC for the Washington Avenue improvements and accept the project as completed. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, counsel. What we have here is the completion of Fifth and Washington, all the way to Sixth, Sixth Street. We've done a final inspection. As you can see in, in the literature there, we have identified numerous locations that needs to be corrected, but instead of shutting down the, the intersection again, we wanted to wait and let, get some summer months on the concrete, go do another inspection and have them to fix everything at one time, that way we don't have to inconvenience the citizens anymore than, than we have to. Our recommendation is for their, their final pay and accept the project as complete.
And I know I haven't, I haven't been up Fifth Street in a while, but I know when they, when it was first, the roundabout was first completed, there was a big crack in it.
Yes, there, there, there's actually, there's actually nine.
Nine?
We, we have identified nine.
Okay, and they're all going to be taken care of?
Oh, sure, yes. And we will rewalk it out again, and any others that, that we find, we will identify those, and those will get corrected at the same time.
Any, any questions or comments? I'm going to take a motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. I will second. Any further discussion? Cora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Oh.
Cox?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Oh.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to agenda item number four, presentation of the monthly financial update. Ms. Swift?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers.
I'll be polite. Good evening.
All right, we're going to start by looking at your handouts that you have in your packet with general fund at a glance. This is through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. We are ninety-one point sixty-seven percent of the year completed. Revenues are six point eight-six percent under budget. Expenditures are six point four-four percent, also under budget, but slightly over revenues. MPWA fund at a glance, revenues are seven point nine-two percent under budget, and expenses are ten point two-four percent under budget. Continue throughout these final few, this final week of, of the year to continue to watch our, our spending, and hopefully more revenues are coming in for us. The next one is the general fund sales tax. For the month of June that we've received, it's nine thousand five hundred thirty-five over last month, but still under last year. General fund revenues for use tax continues to surge over prior years, but a little bit less than last month. We anticipate that to continue.
Welcome, people on line chat.
Our next report is MPWA revenues. Water sales, residential and commercial. This is also reporting with May billing completed. The final month, or the final billing for June thirtieth is just around the corner. Residential, commercial increased over April, but still under last year, slightly under last year.
When do we expect to have those new meters in for the rural?
For the rural, we're still working on those. We do have some that have been placed. With staffing and scheduling, we just need to complete that process.
So what's your best guess?
Um, what do you think about?
Do you attribute this, this trend to the fact that meters are not recorded properly?
I do. I, I looked really closely at this today, actually, and I do find that with the shortfall of the revenues that are coming in, almost every one of our districts, and, which includes some commercial, which is in the wholesale piece of this, it's about a hundred and forty-three million gallons less than last year. And putting that at, I think, what our rate is today, it's about a little over five hundred thousand dollars. So, not really sure exactly what's contributing to that. I know one particular one is rather, it, it's in the millions versus this year versus last year of gallons that we, we build that has caused quite a bit of that.
So, have a guess as to when we get those new meters cracked up?
Um, let's, uh...
Councilman, I'll commit to you that by the end of July, they'll be in, and if they're not, if they're not, we will hire a contractor to get them in.
Hope the new meters solve the problem.
Yes. The final report that you have is our treasury report. The only thing that's not identified here is our five hundred thousand of emergency funds that we have made that transfer from one bank to the other. That's not reflected in this, or bank account, I should say. But will be in our next update.
Haven't really used...
We have not used any of that, no, not yet.
So what's the plan to return that to the emergency fund?
Um, I don't think it's, there's a plan necessarily to return it. I think that we will eventually have to, have to use it here pretty soon, but at this point, we have not dipped into that as well, with anything, because we do anticipate, as we've addressed with our sales tax coming in and our debt, which Mr. Stasiak has, has mentioned several times, below, you know, it's a one-point-two-million deficit that we're not going to have to. So, I, I truly anticipate us having to probably use that to compensate for what we're not going to have in sales tax there.
So, have we gotten anything in addition to that one-and-a-quarter million, or whatever the bunch it was?
It's been awarded to us, but we have not received it.
And Councilman, previously, about a month ago, we did receive sixty-nine thousand dollars in CARE money for our airport. This council did approve that and accept it, and that's for administration and materials and supplies, so we do have that available to us also going forward. Those are the only two items that we've received from the CARES Act.
So, when we get that next big chunk of federal money, does that make us whole?
Uh, well, we, we're still awaiting on what the guidelines are as far as how we can spend that money. Until we get that, we, I mean, that's, I don't know what, we can't really anticipate what we could spend it on at this point. It's strictly going to be, you know, outlined for us here soon.
If I could.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have a lot of questions about that one-and-a-quarter million dollars, but if you look at this year, we're going to fall short about two-point-two million dollars in our budget. That's for this year, ending next week. And then the anticipated shortfall for next year is four-point-five million dollars. That's six-point-seven million dollars. That one-and-a-quarter million dollars is a piece of the puzzle for six-point-seven million. So, it's going to help, but it is definitely not the answer to our problem.
So, do you anticipate more federal money?
Um, we will, um, for the CARES Act, we continue to report on that. I think we have, we can still turn in claims on that act, on that. Stephanie, our grant writer, will continue to do so. So, I'm not sure exactly what, you know, the results would be, but...
Councilman, that next request for information is due on July the tenth. That's the end of the reporting period for the month of June. We are falling off as the amount of people that are dedicated to COVID-19. What it calls for is fifty percent of your time is, if you work more than fifty percent of your time on the pandemic, then those funds are re, are reimbursable. My time is no longer reimbursable. I spent two months, pretty much full-time on that pandemic. Those funds were part of that one-point-two-five million, but I don't have any of my time that'll be reimbursable going forward at this point, unless we have another disaster. But you have to look at fire, you have to look at police, you have to look at nine-one-one, you have to look at all those different areas which are considered emergency response. And what we will be doing is gathering all that information like we did this last time, and evaluating how much time each person actually spent on it. You actually have to look at each individual and pull out whether or not they were on vacation, holidays, comp time. I mean, it's, it is an unbelievable undertaking. And since you asked the question, I want to, I want to applaud the employees of this city, because as we look around at the reimbursements from other communities, McAllister got it right. And that, that request for reimbursement was five hundred and seven pages long. This accounting department, our grant writing department, all the people that were involved in this, each and every one of our individuals that had to record their time as whether it was work time or COVID time, and then to be able to pull all that information together, and to pull that document, that request together, of five hundred and seven pages in a very short period of time, was anything but phenomenal.
True.
To give you an idea, we got one-point-two-four million. The next highest one was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
I know, very...
Yeah, so then we got...
But even if we get reimbursed for all that time you're talking about, it won't make us whole on the sales tax losses, right?
No, sir, it will not.
And one, one other thing about the CARES Act, there's, the state is, even after this, is got, going to have around five hundred million dollars still in that fund to be distributed, and the state is working with our federal delegation to try to get some of the requirements relaxed as to what can be reimbursed, because right now, just loss of revenue can't be reimbursed, even though, you know, clearly in Oklahoma, if businesses shut down, your cities run on sales tax. So, there's work being done to try to make it where the, there's, there's more things to, to use to get access to the money.
Good.
Are there any, any other questions or comments on the financial report?
Yeah.
Thank you. In that case, we will move on to new business. Any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of passing or posting the agenda in accordance with section three-one-one point nine, title twenty-five Oklahoma State statutes. Do you have any new business, Mr. Stasiak?
Mayor, we do not.
In that case, we'll go to city manager's report.
Uh, just real quick, I wanted to give you an update on the Infrastructure Solutions Group water study. We've pretty much gone over the final document on that water study. They're making a few changes to that, and we plan to have the presentation of that complete water study on July the fourteenth at our next council meeting. So, we're pretty excited to present this to the council. It's got some... So we're pretty excited to, uh, uh, present this to the council, it's got some pretty interesting findings in it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, we will move to, on to remarks and inquiries by City Council, Councilman Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody, we've got a big election next Tuesday, the thirtieth of June, and we have early voting on the Thursday, Friday and Saturday before that, so I'd just like to encourage everybody to, you know, use their great privilege to vote and get up and vote. We have a lot of races, including, count, uh, Ward One and Ward Five, Sheriff, Senate, Representative, Sheriff, and what else, John?
Both, both, uh, both state, uh, both state, state reps, state senator. I don't know if there's a primary at, at the federal level or not, but...
I don't either.
I think there is a primary at the federal level for Council, for Congressman Wallenski, I know someone's running that.
Senator Enel.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
There's state questions.
On the primary, I know.
Isn't it state question eight oh two?
I think, that'll be in November, I think. I think. I don't know, do you know, James? Is it? Okay. Yeah.
Eight oh two.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, the, the Medicaid expansion will be on there as well.
Right.
Uh, Vice Mayor Stevens?
Good, thank you.
Councilman Cox?
Yes, I would just like to say a big thank you to the McAllister Fire Department for their understanding and working with the city to get the, uh, new contract in place so quickly. So that was, that was a good job on everyone involved.
Councilman Brown?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, I'd like to say that, um, we've had a great get-together last, it was last Friday night. Anybody miss that, I had a young man that put this program together, he was twenty-one years old. We went to OU and there was a lot of speaking, and of course, Mayor, you were there, district police, and I think this young man is building his future and I hope he continues his great work. And his name is Rashad Bowie. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Harrison?
Uh, two of the gentlemen, uh, Councilmen have already, um, mentioned these, but I will just reiterate, like you said, uh, Councilman Smith, about the election on June the thirtieth, which includes, uh, Ward One and Ward Five, the, um, appointment in which I am releasing to someone else. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, Dr. Denick for coming and giving the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Also, again, uh, congratulations to Rashad Bowie for, uh, organizers for the, uh, BLM listening rally on last Friday. And also, I would like to give a shout-out to, uh, Councilman James Brown for sharing his experience to promote unity in the city of McAllister. And, uh, Mayor, uh, Brown and Cora Milton for the Juneteenth proclamation that was, uh, given that evening. And also on Saturday, I, I didn't make it, but it's my understanding that the community cookout event and the organ- organizers, that their event went well, too. And that's it, thank you.
Councilman Pritchard?
I have a couple of questions for the City Manager. In your City Manager's report, you talk about the, uh, you have put out RFPs for the street overlay projects. Is that something we've done in the past, me putting out RFPs?
It is not, Councilman, in the past, we have done our own overlays here at the city, but because of the reduced personnel and also the need to get a lot of streets overlaid, uh, we are going out for not only, uh, the cost of the asphalt, but also a company to lay that asphalt down for us. So we're doing, doing something a little different.
You think that's gonna start, you think that's gonna start in July?
Uh, I know we're opening bids this week, and if we can get that awarded in the middle of, in the first meeting in July on the fourteenth, it'll be towards the end of July, first part of August, yes, sir.
If, if you have the map or listing of streets you're gonna do or put out for bid, did you send that to me?
Absolutely, I'll send it to every, all the council.
Okay, um, and then one more straight question, um, up here on Pier Street, uh, you think that will be done by, it looks like, I guess, next week, is that correct?
That is not correct, we are behind schedule and we're probably looking at the middle of July to finish Pier Street now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, James Brown, I forgot, a minute ago, he got by me, but Councilman Harrison was also at the Rashad Bowie get-together at the Stripes Center. So, I wanted to mention that, that people are there again, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, we are on to Mayor's comments and committee appointments. First of all, I want to congratulate Janet Wans- Wansick, our retired chief Wansick's wife, she has just been appointed the, uh, I believe it's the president of, uh,
President.
of Eastern Oklahoma State College, it's kinda nice to have a, uh, have a, a local take that position. She'll do, you know, she'll do an incredible job, I'm sure of that. Also, we have a, a man, a gentleman named, uh, Greg Pearson, who is starting a flag football league to, not, not to the city of McAllister, but just getting one together, and, uh, there'll be flyers up in places, and there is a Facebook page on it, so anyone that's interested in participating in that, I would, uh, encourage you to, to, uh, find it on Facebook and get it going. He's, uh, he's played, uh, quite a bit, it sounds like, and I think it'll, I know the city used to put this on years ago 'cause I used to play it and it was a whole lot of fun. If I tried to play it now, I'd probably, I'd probably kill myself, but, uh, in my head, I'm still playing. I also wanted to, uh, mention the, uh, the BLM rally and the, uh, unity in the community, uh, event. Uh, one was, one was Friday and one was Saturday. Good, good turnout, great, great message at, at the, uh, the BLM rally, and, you know, there's a lot of craziness going on and, and there's a lot of hyperbole from everybody on this, and I would just suggest that, you know, don't jump to conclusions, ask questions and listen to people when they tell you their story, because I guarantee you, your eyes will be opened. I thought, I thought that I knew, I thought I was fairly well-versed in, uh, all of the things that are going on and have been going on and, and how it affects members of the community, and I learned a lot at the, at the BLM rally. And then the unity in the community was just a great fun function, everybody, I, I didn't hear a single person complain about anything, and that's unusual. Uh, they had a dunk tank, which I had made it sixty-one years of my life without never having been in a dunk tank, I can no longer say that. And, uh, I'm, will be happy if I can make it another sixty-one without doing it again, but it was a lot of fun. The last thing I have is, out on the, uh, on the bypass, on the service roads around Freedom Ford, I know it's probably ODOT doing it, but, uh, they're laying some kind of lines and there's a big hole that's been there for quite some time, and they will, uh, they asked me if there was anything we could do about it or check into it to see.
That is the contractor for ODOT who's doing some electrical work down there, and we will contact ODOT in the morning and have that checked out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we will recess the, uh, the council meeting, and I would take a motion in a second to convene us of McAllister Airport Authority, the motion to include approval of minutes from June ninth, twenty-twenty, regular meeting of McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item B and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Cora, would you call her over, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I would now take a motion to convene us of McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from June ninth, twenty-twenty, regular meeting of McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on City Council Agenda Item B, I, three, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Cora? Cora, would you call her over, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, I would now take a motion to convene us of McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include, uh, approval of minutes from May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, regular meeting of McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefit payments for the period of June twenty-twenty, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Cora, would you call her over, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cox?
Yeah.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. I would now take a motion to go into executive session, proposed, uh, executive session pursuant to Title twenty-five, section three oh seven B two, to discuss negotiations concerning employees and representatives of, of employee group, the Fraternal Order of Police, and, uh, proposed executive session pursuant to Title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven B one, to discuss the continued employment of Urban and Urban as the city attorney. Motion, Councilman Smith, second Councilwoman Harrison, any discussion? Cora, would you call her over, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, so we're in executive session.